Good evening, I'd like to welcome everybody to the May 7th, 2014 Meeting of the Murfreesboro Planning Commission. We have a quorum presence, so I'll call the meeting to order. The first item on tonight's agenda is to approve the minutes of the April 2nd, 2014, and the April 16th, 2014 Planning Commission Meetings. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes? Hearing none, I'll declare them approved as submitted. We have one item under our business tonight, and that is a PUD Amendment Application for approximately two acres in the Indian Hills PUD to be used for a restaurant along South Church Street at Calumet Trace. Mr. Bill Huddleston, on behalf of Indian Hills LLC as applicant. Mr. Adelot, good evening.
Good evening. During this regular meeting on December 4th of 2013, the Planning Commission conducted a public hearing on the application you just described, and that is to consider a PUD Amendment for the Indian Hills Plan Development to remove two acres for the development of a restaurant, as described in the program book that was previously passed out to you and which is included with your agenda materials. After the public hearing, the Planning Commission deferred action with the expectation that the applicant would meet with the neighboring property owners, the subdivision primarily, to discuss the application and to discuss ways that they could mitigate the impact if the application was to proceed. The applicant did host a neighborhood meeting, I attended it, it was on January 14th. There has been some additional efforts to reach out to the neighborhood, but at this point, the applicant desires to return to the Planning Commission, for the Planning Commission to prepare a recommendation on the item for the City Council. Mr. Huddleston, representing the applicant, that'd be Mr. Bill Huddleston, would like to present his letter and some of the possible changes to the program book or restrictions that may be placed on the property if this were to move forward.
Mr. Huddleston, good evening.
Good evening, Chairman Lamb, members of the Planning Commission. I'm Bill Huddleston, President of Huddleston Steel Engineering. I'm here on behalf of the Indian Hills Golf Course owners, more specifically, Mr. John Floyd, Mr. Jim MacLeary, here in the audience tonight. We did have a well-attended neighborhood meeting back in January, we got a lot of good input from the neighborhood, and from that meeting, we found three things that we wanted to do to help, as Joseph said, sort of help soften the impact of this development on the surrounding neighborhood. We've made three commitments, so that if this zoning were to continue on, which we hope it will, I want to spell out three commitments that the owners are making for this development. Number one, we are providing restrictive covenants, which will be drafted before the second reading of council, should we get that far, and we will record them before the third reading of City Council, that will restrict the remaining property along South Church Street, so that this would be the only parcel that we're going to ask for commercial zoning. We will not ask for any commercial zoning to the south, towards the Bojangles Restaurant, or any more commercial zoning to the north, towards Stones River. Second, we are going to deed to the Homeowners Association the monument signs in the landscaping areas that are at the main entrance. The Homeowners Association is already taking care of those areas, they're doing a great job, but they've indicated that they would like for us to actually deed them that property so they would own it, and the Indian Hills Golf Course owners have agreed to do that. And third, we are committing to extending the berm. There's a berm along the north right-of-way of Calumet Trace that is between this development and the closest houses to this proposed development. We've agreed to extend what is a very mature tree row on top of a significant berm, so that we will be providing a great shield from these houses for our development. At the request of the homeowners in the neighborhood, we delayed coming back to Planning Commission. They wanted to explore the possibility of raising their dues in order to help fund the golf course debt, and in so doing, this proposal would go away. That effort failed, the Homeowners Association and the homeowners could not get together to approve such a request to increase their homeowner's dues, so we would like to carry on with our proposal to provide zoning for a high-end sit-down restaurant at the corner of Calumet Trace and South Church Street. If you have to answer any questions this time.
Any Planning Commission members or staff have questions, Mr. Huddleston?
I have two questions, Chairman. First, the restrictive covenants, will those run with the land so that the golf course is ever sold, though it would be enforceful against any and all subsequent owners?
Yes, they will.
And the second question, how high of a berm are you talking about? How tall and how tall trees are we talking about?
Yeah, I mean, it's not just like a three-foot berm, it's more like five or six feet tall, and then you have a mature tree row on top of that.
With evergreens?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
In your earlier application, you said there'd be no drive-in windows?
That's correct, that's part of our original commitment, we will not have drive-through windows.
And continuing on with what Mr. Ely was saying, when we looked at a map, you could continue that berm on around a little further and make both of those houses where you couldn't see them.
That's exactly right, we'll agree to do that, yes, sir.
Now, I've had some numerous conversations with people, and as we all had here in the last, what about the traffic? And there's a red light there, so you're going to get timed out, is there anything that says that this is going to clog up traffic a whole lot more?
No, sir, not at all.
To follow up Mr. Young's question, I had a question that was brought to me today, as a matter of fact, and I told him that I would ask. Bill, how many cars do you think could be in a row, or stacking, I guess is the term, that would either be turning left or right onto 231, that would back into, say, about where you would turn out of this parcel? Do you have any idea?
Well, there's significant laneage there already, I mean, those turn lanes are 150 feet long at least.
Okay, so how many, about?
You could get 10 cars in there anyway, in the right lane and the left lane. And what we've agreed to do for traffic purposes, we've got our access on Calumet pushed back as far away from the intersection of South Church Street as we can, and then we're also showing an access on South Church Street pushed as far south as we can get it, but it is only a right-in, right-out. Left turns in will not be allowed, and left turns out will not be allowed.
Okay, any other questions from Mr. Huddleston? Ms. Jones?
I got confused on that, sorry.
No problem.
Were you talking about turn lanes off of 231 into the property, or off of Calumet Trace?
No ma'am, off of Calumet Trace, there are long turn lanes going to South Church Street.
Okay, so just looking at the little map we've got, I wouldn't have guessed you'd have 10 cars stacking in there, but okay, that's good. That's what I wanted to make sure, we were talking about Calumet Trace.
Mr. Huddleston, if I turn out of this supposed restaurant, are my headlights going to shine in anybody's house?
No, sir, not with that berm and those evergreen trees.
Mr. Huddleston, do you have, do you know of a buyer that's waiting in the wings for this property?
We do not, we have not pursued a buyer yet, our real estate agents told us it'd be fruitless right now without the zoning.
Okay, any other questions from the Planning Commission or staff? Thank you, Ms. Huddleston.
Thank you.
Excuse me, Chairman, I've got one, who's going to draw the covenants, restrictive covenants for you, do you know that yet? Do you have a plan yet on how, who will have the ability to enforce those?
They will run with the land, and I assume the Homeowners Association will be a party to them.
Okay, so it would be then that any resident out there, as well as the association itself, would have the authority to enforce the covenants?
Yes, they would be a party to it.
Mr. Huddleston, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any comments, or anything from the Planning Commission before we ask for a motion?
Chairman, I'd just like to say, and I made several comments about this when it came up at the public hearing, I live very close to this, in the subdivision, and the traffic that comes in and out of there at peak times, and given the fact that there are golf carts and kids that come through there, and the fact that this is a 30-year-old established neighborhood, and this isn't just raw land, it's near a neighborhood, it's actually part of it, the neighbors there, just, while I'm sure they appreciate the concessions that have been made for the covenants and so forth, still really just do not feel this is an appropriate use of the land, and I'll be voting against it because of that.
Thank you, Mr. Ely. Any other comments?
I'll make the comment before we vote, or my comments. I've had many emails and several conversations with respects to this project, and, you know, the way that I'm looking at it is, and what I try to look at is, is it inconsistent with other zoning in the area? And we have two other subdivisions that I know of on this same road that has commercial developments at the entrance of the neighborhood, and those neighborhoods have thrived as part of, even though those commercial developments were at the front of those developments. Also, in this particular case, there are specific guarantees with respects to the development itself, whereas with some of these other developments that were along 231, there was no, it was just zoned commercial highway, and there was no necessarily planned development with respects to the lots that were developed in the commercial highway zone in front of those neighborhoods. So I don't feel like it's inconsistent, I do feel like the plan in and of itself is a good plan, and I will be voting for it.
Mr. Haliburton, I said I agree 100% with all of your comments, and I will not say them all over again, but I do believe it's appropriate zoning.
All right, I'm going to weigh in now. Okay, my daughter lives out there, she lives on Crazy Horse, which is pretty close to this development, and I can assure you that if I thought this was going to harm her, or her family, or her property value, I wouldn't vote for it. But I don't think it's going to hurt anybody's property values. One of the things that scares me, and you know, they say a golf course really doesn't work till the third time, so if this golf course failed, that would cause some real problems. I think that would devalue properties. We all got a letter in the mail this week about how our property values have increased from a state-mandated reproperty.
Reassessment.
Reassessment, thank you, Mr. Lamb. So the neighborhood continues to flourish, and the property values go up, and I've had long conversations with some of my ex-friends that this is going to ruin their property values, and I just don't see that, I don't see that that's happening. I'm really going to go out on a limb here and say, if a really good restaurant comes in there, it'll be a real asset to the community. You can get in your golf cart and drive up there and have a nice meal, and get in your golf cart and go back home. Now, I know a lot of people don't agree with that, but that's the way I look at it.
Okay, there's no other comments, we're ready for somebody to make a motion.
I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion that we approve the plan as submitted, including the covenants and guarantees that Bill, Mr. Huddleston outlined in his letter today.
Second.
Motion is made in seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
One negative vote. The motion carries. Moving on to public hearings tonight, we have nine public hearings scheduled for this evening. Item A is a PRD Amendment and rezoning application for approximately 1.14 acres along the old Las Casas Highway to be removed from the Stratford Hall PRD, and to be zoned as a separate PRD. Gary Wisniewski is the applicant. Mr., excuse me, Ms. Green, good evening.
Good evening, thank you. Our first public hearing this evening is for you to consider amending or changing a PRD zone from PRD to a separate PRD. Currently, the property that's shaded in orange on the map that's before you is owned PRD, and that's Planned Residential District, and it is a part of the Stratford Hall Plan Development, and is a part of the program which they presented to us. Property is familiar to you, because during your regular meeting on January 8th, the Planning Commission conducted a public hearing on the described PRD Amendment and zoning application. At that meeting, action was deferred for further study, and then during the Planning Commission's regular meeting on February 19th, the Planning Commission again considered the matter, and afterwards discussed the matter, which was recommended for approval with a split vote, so it was not a unanimous vote. From there, since the motion did pass, it was subsequently scheduled for a public hearing for the City Council, just last, two weeks ago, on April 24th. Before that meeting, the developer requested to be removed off the City Council agenda because there's some changes that he is wishing to make to the plan, and because there were those changes, he wanted to withdraw it and present those to you, and have your recommendation prior to going to the City Council. So after the time the Planning Commission considered the matter, the applicant continued to consider the matter and attempt to address some concerns that staff had, one of which was how the solid waste would be served for this property, and another was, they continued to hear concerns expressed from the public and the neighboring properties regarding the architectural appearance of the proposed buildings. So in order to address these matters, the applicant has investigated architectural design that would have essentially the same building footprint as you reviewed previously, but would have a more traditional architectural form, and I've got an image on the screen for you to see, with a very heavy reliance on masonry as exterior building material. The applicant's also investigated changes to the site plan to add an alley element that allows for service to the solid waste element without backing into the street, and which also results in net increase in parking. Because these changes are significant, it does have to come back to you for your recommendation. I see that Mr. Wisniewski came to the lectern at the beginning of my introduction, so I think he has some things to add about this site, after which you should conduct a public hearing and formulate a recommendation, which we will take to City Council.
Yes, sir.
Chairman Lamb, Planning Commission, thank you for hearing this. As Ms. Ely indicated, this project was brought before the Planning Commission, before, and it already passed a public hearing, and it was going on to the council. However, after meeting with the HOA, and then meeting with the homeowners at a meeting, there were some other items that came up that we felt were inadequate on the plan. So we decided to make those changes, and because the changes we felt were significant, we thought it'd be best to bring it before the Planning Commission, so you had the true plan of what we'd like to build there. On the first go-around, there were three items that came up with the HOA, Stratford Hall, the HOA President and Directors. Those three were the buildings that were running east and west, that wanted to make sure that the windows on the second story would be eliminated, we agreed to do that. The other question that came up was a construction entrance that comes into Stratford Hall, Section 5, which is currently under construction. There will be 34 homes complete there, and that is the only construction entrance. Being that Stratford Hall is a PUD or a PRD, and they own the streets, they wanted to make sure the heavy construction equipment stayed off the streets. We agreed to not only build the entrance, but to go ahead and have gated entrance into Stratford Hall, Section 5, and we agreed to go ahead and make sure that that stayed open until the last home was built in Section 5, as agreed in the letter we sent to Mr. Adelot and staff on February 7th. The third item of concern was the storm drainage. The storm drainage on this 1.14 acres was originally designed for that entire parcel that it adjoins on Stratford Hall, Section 5. So the drainage in that area is adequate, but the one concern was that some of the water coming off of this Center Point project would actually be using the bioretention pond that was on that property of Stratford Hall. We came to an agreement, and I believe Ms. Hunter and the board signed that with Mr. Parks earlier on this week, regarding that the HOA that will be set up at Center Point will be responsible for 1/12 of the maintenance of that bioretention area, and that instrument was prepared by Mr. Jeffrey, also sent to Mr. Adelot. After we addressed those items, we came before the Planning Commission, and the project was passed on a public hearing. Subsequently, we met with the homeowners at a meeting, townhome meeting, at St. Mark's Church. There were a few other items that came up that were addressed, and those were the items, as I said, that we felt would change the plan significantly enough, to go ahead and bring it back before you. One of the items was the privacy and the buffering around this project with Stratford Hall. As originally proposed, and now highlighted again, there will be a berm running around the entire property except the front on Old Las Casas, that will contain heavy plantings, plus an eight-foot-tall polyvinyl fence that'll be maintained by the HOA of Center Point. That fence would consist of six-foot pickets and a two-foot lattice at the top. The other item that came up was the trash pickup, and the trash pickup, because of the amount of units, has to be done with a dumpster. The one concern was that where the dumpster was located, the trash company would have to pick it up and go ahead and back into Old Las Casas, that would be dangerous. We agreed, and now have revised the plan to have an alleyway behind the entire project. So the trash company can come in, pick up the dumpster, and drive straight on the loop on the way out, and never have to back up into the street of Old Las Casas. The other concern that we heard quite a bit, and we also heard from the Planning Commission, was they weren't happy with the modern urban design. So we went back to the drawing board with the same floor plans, and that's where we redesigned them to be a brownstone look, which is this look here, which Ms. Ely put up on the screen for you earlier. One of the other concerns was that this project would be not maintained. The project itself will have heavy restrictive HOA documents that will record it with the deed, travel with the property, and it will be professionally maintained by a third-party management company. And the last item that came up were these to be rental homes, and the answer is no, they're all sold fee simple, they're townhouses, they will be sold outright to folks that wish to buy them. So those are the changes that were made, and that's how the project progressed. I welcome your comments.
Any questions, Mr. Wisniewski?
Gary, how many units, 34 units?
Seventeen.
Seventeen?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I don't want to get 34, so there's 17 units.
But if you blessed 34, then...
No, there's not enough room, I'm sorry. Seventeen units, how much in the first plan?
Seventeen.
Seventeen units?
Yes, there were no additional.
Now, didn't you pick up a couple of parking spaces somewhere?
Yes, we did. If you could bring that up on the screen possibly, the site plan?
I'm not sure we managed to get to the agenda, but I do have a hard copy right here. That's the Planning Commission members.
I'm trying to work off my memory, and that's...
That's why I brought an extra.
While he's looking at that, your architectural rendering of the brownstones that you're talking about shows roof treatments with various mixtures of gables and dormer windows on there, are you planning to include that?
Absolutely.
That's a nice look, a great improvement from your previous design.
The picture that you have in front of you, Chairman Lamb, is pretty identical to exactly what you're going to see. The buildings are a five, a five-plex, a six-plex, and a six-plex, and they will be a mixture of brick and hardy plank. Also, you'll have one or two of the facades that will be hardy, as you see, in the one you're looking at, the third one from the left, is a green hardy, and that would be consistent with all the finishes that are used in Stratford Hall itself.
And it looks like most of the stoops are covered, from what I see here, the one with the three dormers there, I can't tell about it, but the others all seem to be, the recessed or covered, is that correct?
They will be. The way the plans are designed, the original plans actually had front porches, so instead of the front porches, we can go ahead and actually bring the facade out a little bit, and leave the front door at the original wall, which gives you three foot of cover. What you're seeing is the facade on the front probably only sticks out about a foot, it's just a decorative facade where you have the pilasters and a little awning, but the door is recessed three feet.
Any other questions?
Did Mr. Young get his question about the parking spaces?
And there are no garages with this, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Wisniewski.
Thank you.
That being said, I'll, before I open the public hearing, let me briefly go over how we conduct our public hearings at our Planning Commission meetings. We'll open the public hearing and ask anybody to come forward that would like to speak either for or against a proposal. Please come to the microphone, clearly state your name, give your address, and hold your comments to no more than three minutes. We will be observing that rule tonight, since we do have nine public hearings to conduct. So please make all your comments to the Planning Commission, and not members of the audience, and if you have questions, the staff will make a note of your questions, and attempt to answer your questions at the conclusion of the public hearing. All that being said, I'll open the public hearing at this time, and ask anybody to come forward that would like to speak.
Hi, my name is Laura Hoops, my mother Cynthia Hoops and I live at 1529 Stratford Hall Circle, in a townhouse that backs up to Old Las Casas Pike. Thank you for allowing us to voice our concerns over the proposed rezoning of 1.14 acres that currently lies within the gated community of Stratford Hall. Some homeowners we spoke to did not know about the rezoning effort until they read about it on February 20th in the Daily News Journal. The article was entitled "Student Housing Development Approved for Old Las Casas Pike." We have learned since then that some Planning Commissioners were swayed by a letter presented by our Board of Directors stating that Stratford Hall residents were in favor of this rezoning. The homeowners were not given an opportunity to hear what the developer Bob Parks and Mr. Wisniewski, the builder, had to say until March 11th. At that time, several homeowners voiced their objections, and we ended the meeting with Bob Parks promising to revisit the whole plan. The only apparent changes were to the aesthetics of the buildings and the areas for parking. No other alternatives to this plan in student rental townhomes is being discussed, and we would like to know why. Why can't that 1.14 acres remain within our gated community? We have the following concerns about the proposed student rental units. The stormwater runoff into our bioretention area from all that asphalt. Stratford Hall by law will have to maintain this, of course mosquito-borne illnesses are certainly a big concern, so the less water we have feeding into the bioretention area that runs along Stratford Hall property, the better it will be for our community. If they want to build those 17 townhouses, then I think they ought to have their own bioretention area that they pay for and maintain themselves. Number two, the already high crime rate in the area. I checked crimemapping.com, the website given to me by the Murfreesboro Police Department. 61 serious crimes were reported to the Murfreesboro Police from April 1st to April 28th, 2014, within 1.0 miles of Old Las Casas Pike. This is primarily an area of rental properties. Number three, the noise that accompanies densely populated student living areas is a serious concern. There is so much land... There is so much land available for student housing around the MTSU campus that we do not think it has to butt up against a quiet residential gated community populated by many senior citizens. And number four, possibly reduced home values. Bob Parks at the homeowners' meeting agreed that the lots in Phase 5 of Stratford Hall that backed up to the student housing would most likely sell for less. What I see in my future is a lower resale value for my home as well. In conclusion, I want the planning commissioners to ask themselves if they would move into a $300,000 home with student housing at their back door. Please do not vote to rezone this 1.14 acres. Leave it inside our quiet gated community of Stratford Hall where it belongs. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am.
My name is Barbara Ferrone. I live at 1537 Stratford Hall Circle. The original proposal that was submitted and approved by the city addressed all of Stratford Hall. This is the same concept that was presented to most of the current homeowners that have invested into this planned neighborhood. The current proposal seeks to pull apart of the original plan out and change it so the developer can sell 1.14 acres. When some of the current residents in Stratford Hall purchased their property, they bought into a concept that the current proposal ignores for the sake of the developer's interest and the expense of the residents. If the planning board permits the change in the development plan, I would hope that they would find that there's a compelling necessity that dictates a change to the plan that contradicts the existing expectations of the development and that of the current residents. Changes when the existing plan is still feasible is not good land planning. The proposal pulls a small piece of the remaining vacant land for the future development of Stratford Hall into a new development. If this is approved, will the city continue to entertain piecemeal developments, ultimately deteriorating the basis of the original plan and approval? I ask that the city give careful consideration to the residents who invested into Stratford Hall. I also hope that the city considers the merits of the existing plan that has made and will continue to make Stratford Hall a cohesive neighborhood, not a series of disjointed housing units that happen to be next to one another. I would like to add that the property is 1/10th of a mile from Stratford Hall Circle. There is 17 homeowners that backs up to Old Las Cassas Road. It was stated that Old Las Cassas Road is apartment and duplexes, and that is not true. There is several other single-family homes that face Old Las Cassas Road. Thank you very much. Please vote to not to entertain them. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
My name is Carla Crater. I live at 1906 Scarlet Drive. My home is the closest two-story to the parcel in question. I have a statement here, but first I have to say that I think one of the problems that we have had on an ongoing basis with this issue is a confusion about what the facts Part of the confusion on my part, I think, right now is something that Mr. Wisnewski said. He said he met with the HOA, and then he met with the homeowners. And I thought the homeowners were the HOA. I understand the HOA has a board, but I thought the HOA was a group of 128 homeowners. That may be confusion on my part, but it also could be confusion on your part, and so I just want to bring that up as a point when we talk about activities that went on with the HOA. I'm not sure who we're talking about, whether it's the five people on the board or whether it's the 128 people who own homes in Stratford Hall. The second point of confusion that just came about for me was that at the March 11th meeting with the developer, Mr. Wisnewski talked about how these individual units could be purchased, and one way to meet the mortgage payment would be to rent out one bedroom while your child was living and the other going to school. He suggested that these units would rent at about $600 per room. I understand that these are individual units for sale, but I inferred from what he said that it was anticipated that rental would occur on these units. I also have not heard of anything that requires these to be owner-occupied, so I don't know what is to prevent them from being rentals. I oppose the removal of this parcel from the Stratford Hall PRD. I appreciate that Mr. Wisnewski has addressed some of our concerns, but there are others, and they include odor and pests from the dumpsters in close proximity to our community, entering into a financial agreement for stormwater management with an entity that's not yet in existence, for an area that has yet to be tested by heavy runoff, in an area where standing water has been inadequately addressed for nearly four years that I've lived in Stratford Hall. But my most fundamental concern is the peaceful enjoyment of my home and that of my neighbors. Based on the noise and conduct problems we've dealt with in the past and the few rentals that currently back up to Stratford Hall, I do not look forward to the disturbances likely to arise from a recreation area for 17 two-bedroom townhomes targeting a young student population. This is not a development I would invite to our side of Old Las Cassas Highway backing directly up to our community. Stratford Hall was created as and has remained an exceptional community. I don't mean to cost Mr. Parks a fair return on, I don't mean to cost Mr. Parks a fair return on his investment that he's made in developing Stratford Hall, but I also don't believe the homeowners should suffer in quality of life, home value, or peaceful enjoyment of our homes. It was my hope that after hearing our concerns, alternatives would be considered that would leave the parcel in Stratford Hall, because when most of us purchased our homes, we bought into a particular concept of community. If it turns out that the lifestyle we bought into isn't what we're going to be able to enjoy after all, shouldn't we, as homeowners, have had the opportunity to vote on modifying the boundaries of Stratford Hall before it came before the planning commission to do so? I ask that you vote against 2013-440, and I thank you for your consideration of my comments.
Thank you, Ms. Crater. Anybody else?
I have the opportunity to live with Carla at 1906 Scarlet Drive, and it's an interesting situation we find ourselves here. I'm not sure why we're here, and I would ask that someone with the appropriate investigatory and, if necessary, powers look into whether or not the agreement that has supposedly been reached by the board to take this parcel out was a legitimate move on their part. If you look at the covenants and bylaws, I don't believe they have the authority to do it. If they were going to do it, doesn't it make sense that something this significant in terms of changing the overall being that of Stratford Hall would at least have a vote of the homeowners? I mean, it might easily pass. I don't know. I won't try to predict how the vote would go, but shouldn't we have had that opportunity? I stand here and I feel rather perplexed, because here we are in front of you. You're going to cast a vote, and a vote that I never had the opportunity to do. That just doesn't seem right. So I ask for you to stop. Stand your back. Let us go through the right process, and when it comes to you, you won't have a gallery of people sitting here, honestly. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Crater. Anybody else?
Chairman Lamb and commission, my name is Roger Haley. I live at 1442 Charleston Boulevard in Stratford Hall. There has been some confusion for several months concerning this request. Initially, I believed, I assumed, and we all know what happens when you assume, that the 1.14 acres under question had been eliminated a year or so ago when the amendment was made to Section 5 of Stratford Hall Planned Residential Development, that the 1.14 acres had been cut out and eliminated. That's not the case. The 1.14 acres under question is still in Stratford Hall. Now, I checked with Mr. Aitlott before the meeting started. Section 5 has been recorded. It's been recorded at the registrar's office. This could become Section 6 and remain in Stratford Hall. It may be that the current owners wish to turn it into another small park area. It may be that the current owners choose to leave it in its current condition, which really is not acceptable. It's been in this condition for some 10 or 12 years now, at least, but regardless, it has not been removed from the Stratford Hall Planned Residential Development. It's been removed from Section 5. On the documents, it shows as future development. Again, an assumption, and an assumption on my part, was that it had been removed and that it would be developed under a plan similar to what you have before you tonight. I would ask you, number one, to consider that it is still currently in Stratford Hall, and I would ask you to leave it in Stratford Hall. That would eliminate the problem that we have, those of us who are concerned with, although it's an improved development, we're still concerned with the possibility, probability, that it will evolve into student housing, student rental units, as Gary indicated the night that we met with him at St. Mark's, that he believed it would, that these units would be sold individually and that they would be good investments for families to make for their children who wish to attend MTSU. And I believe that. Set that aside. If you do consider this as a reasonable application, one that you want to take positive action on, I would ask you to take into consideration that even though there are two additional parking places under the proposed plan that carries it up to, I believe, 40 parking spaces, this meets city code. All you have to do is drive down Gold Valley Drive from Old Las Cassas to Rutherford Boulevard virtually any time of the day or night to find that the units that are developed, single-family units that are developed, a lot of them are absentee ownership, and if you try to walk down the sidewalk, you can't get down the sidewalk. You're going to have to get out in the street because the cars are, the back ends are sticking beyond the sidewalks. The cars are parked in front of the homes. Forty parking places for 17 units, even though it meets code, would not be sufficient. If you were to consider this proposal, I would encourage you to consider asking the applicant to reduce the number of units to 10 or 12 units. I'm sure the answer is going to be, well, it, you know, that adds to the cost. Land costs go up. That's true. I'm not worried about his land cost. I'm not worried about Mr. Parks, Mr. Benfield selling the property. I'm concerned about if we have to make a concession and see something built, let's make a concession that makes sense. Quite often, from years of experience, it's easy to come up and say, I'm against something. I always wanted people to give me an alternative. I think this is a justifiable, reasonable alternative if you were to consider positive action on this. But again, I would ask you to not approve it. Just leave it as Stratford Hall, Section 6. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Haley. Anybody else?
I'm Claudia Hunter. I live at 1935 Scarlet Drive. I am also the president of the HOA. A couple of things that have been mentioned tonight I'd like to clarify. As far as information for the residents, as soon as I received a letter from this planning commission that there was going to be a public hearing on this property, I received that in December, I believe it was December 27th, and I scanned it and I emailed it to every resident who has an email address in Stratford Hall. Those nine persons who do not have email addresses got a copy hand-delivered to them. So everyone should have been totally aware of the public hearing and that there was going to be a change to this parcel. Also, there was no agreement with the board, with Mr. Parks, about what was going to happen to this acre. It was mentioned that there was a letter from the board, but there wasn't. Mr. Parks has worked with us from 2010, when he started wanting to develop Section 5. He has worked with us on what that design would be. At one point, he wanted a number of different things, and one of those things was front-entry garages in the community. He had a community meeting, and the community said, no, we don't want that. And then, anyway, things changed. So when we knew what the plan was going to be, which was in June of 2012, we wrote a newsletter, we sent out information, what was going to happen to that back section. I called it the back 40, but it's not really 40 acres, but, and what was going to happen, and that that acre would be removed from the plan that we were planning, and that eventually it would have townhomes built on it. And that's pretty much what's happening. We sent another newsletter article about what was happening with that property in November of 2012, and I believe it was approved by the planning commission in December, I think, of 2012, December or January of 2013. But anyway, the community was notified about that. My personal opinion as a neighbor and not as a board of, president of the Board of Directors, is that this is the best plan that has come forward for this particular area. And I think that Mr. Wisnewski has addressed all of the concerns that came up in our March 11th meeting with the homeowners. While everyone, every homeowner was aware of the meeting, there were not that many people who came to that meeting, which is unfortunate. I think we should take pride in our community and take an interest in what happens in it. But he has addressed every concern that persons had about that acre. And I, my personal opinion, I'm not speaking for the board here, my personal opinion is that we should go forward with it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hunter. Last call. In case I want to close the public hearing. First question I have for probably Mr. Ives, or Ms. Crater, I promise, Mr. Ives, the question is brought up on the legality of this application.
I'm not aware of anything that would attack or would say that this is not a completely legal application. I think the owners of the property have the right to ask for it to, for the provisions to be changed. As far as we know, as far as I know, anyway, adequate public notice was given of the proposal. I'm not aware of anything that would make this be an illegal application. I'm not aware of any agreement between the HOA and the applicant, but I don't know that that's, maybe it should be a requirement, but I don't believe that it is. The applicant is still the owner, or under contract to be the owner at least, of this property, and as such has the right to come to ask for changes.
Thank you. In case you don't know, Mr. Ives is an attorney with our legal division here at the City of Murfreesboro. Mr. Aitlott, if any of the other comments, did you have questions? Did you have any comments?
Yes, sir. I may want to offer a couple. I didn't hear many que... I didn't hear many questions tonight, but on the theme of what we just discussed with Mr. Ives, part of what the confusion is, is about zoning and about maybe restrictions. This property, this entire tract, including this 1.14 acres, was part of the Stratford Hall PRD when it was originally conceived. It was within the area that was zoned from the city's land use entitlement regulations. It was within the area that we entitled for a certain type of development that was authorized to proceed with development accordingly. To my knowledge, this particular part of the property was never included in any restrictive covenants, in any deed restrictions, or anything of that nature, that would give the property owners within Stratford Hall a right to enforce restrictions upon it. What it did do was, it was included within the area zoned as part of the PRD. Now, but part of the application is, this application is twofold. One, one part of it is to remove the property from the Stratford Hall PRD. The other part is to create a separate new and independent zoning under a separate program book. This is what would become the zone entitlement regulation for this area if it were approved. This and the subsequent addendums that Mr. Wisnewski offered tonight, the possibility for amendment, it's kind of like the earlier one with the Indian Hills, that was the change to it. In that case, they were choosing to remain as part of the Indian Hills PUD. In this one, they were asking to be removed. Now, the question comes up, must they be removed in order for them to do this? Well, no, I don't know that they must. They could, it is within the realm and possibility of zoning that they could remain as part of the Stratford Hall PUD or PRD, but have a different land use entitlement and not be subject to the HOA. So it is possible that it could be. But for simplicity's sake, part of it being for administration purposes, for my staff and myself and into the future, we had advised that it be simply removed and be independent. Because no matter how you slice it, that's what they're wanting to do, whether remain under the heading of Stratford Hall or if it's removed. So this is a little bit confusing for the layperson who does not deal with zoning on a day-to-day basis. And frankly, I've had a little bit of trouble getting people to understand when I've tried to explain this to them. So if there's any confusion on your part, ask again. We're going to give it a good try again.
Well, whether it's 1.14 acres being requested to be removed, or 10.14 acres requested be removed, the owner would have the right to do whatever they chose to do in that regard.
That is correct. And I'm going to add that were there restrictive covenants that had bound this property into the PUD, been recorded on this property, that might give an entitlement to the property owners. But that's never been done, and it's typically not done until the property is actually subdivided.
Okay. Question I might have from Mr. Huddleston, if you're representing the applicant, Mr. Huddleston, it's on the question brought up about the stormwater detention area.
Yes, sir, Chairman Lamb. We have for some time known that this particular part of the Stratford Hall property does not lend itself well to be included in the design of Stratford Hall. But we also knew that this property does drain into Stratford Hall, and that bio-retention area absolutely has been designed to include this area and to treat the stormwater from this area. And in fact, it's better to have one larger bio-retention area treating stormwater, that's more effective than having a couple of smaller ones. So absolutely, this has been included in the plan the entire time.
Okay, so under state law for this type of detention area we're within, it being off-site is perfectly legal and legitimate?
Yes, we do it, we do it a fair amount. That's true.
Any other questions for Mr. Huddleston while he's up there?
Yes. On that same issue, as far as maintaining and taking care of that retention area, how is that designed to be handled?
Originally, the Stratford Hall Homeowners Association, through contracts and commitments that were made during the approval of Stratford Hall, are under an obligation to take care of the bio-retention area. And they have, in the course of getting that approved, we provided the proper documentation so that there is a plan in place, and the city knows about it, to take care of that bio-retention area. Then, when this proposal came along, it was realized that, hey, Mr. Wisnewski, you've got a development you're proposing here, some of your property drains into the bio-retention area. Mr. Wisnewski agreed, yes, it does, it's been planned that way. And so he was asked if they would help pay for the maintenance, and he has agreed to do that. So there are documents that Mr. Jeff Reed has created so that the Center Point ownership is going to pay into the Stratford Hall Homeowners Association to help maintain the bio-retention area.
So will that be a separate HOA for Center Point that handles that?
Yes.
Okay. If that HOA were to fold or go under and not be able to maintain itself, what becomes of that obligation for Center Port, portion of that cost?
Well, it's my understanding, and you're getting into the legal document that I didn't write, but it's my understanding that somebody is going to end up with that land, and whoever's got that land has to continue to pay into that Homeowners Association.
So your understanding is that it'll run with the ownership of the property regardless of the viability of an HOA?
That's correct.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Huddleston?
I got one.
Yes, sir.
Just going back to Mr. Haley's comment, we understand that this meets the city's requirements with respects to parking spaces based upon the 17 units. If you were to guess, Mr. Huddleston, if there, if there was a need for overflow parking, where would they park? Would they be parking in this private alley in the back? Or, I mean, is that?
That's where I would guess, because I don't think they're going to park on Old Last Cassis Highway.
Right, right.
And one thing that some of us who've been fooling with this kind of thing for a pretty long time, may have been before your term on Planning Commission, our old parking requirement for apartments, for two-bedroom apartments, was two parking spaces per unit. And so that would be, for a two-bedroom unit, so that would be 34 spaces. As we looked at these things, and especially around the college, we realized that more parking is needed for college housing. And so the requirement was raised to 2.2 per two-bedroom instead of two, and that has worked.
Okay.
And so that's what we originally approved. And Mr. Haley did come out and meet with me at my office, I appreciated that. He had two concerns, two main ones, he had a lot of concerns, but two main ones. One was the dumpster situation, and at that point, we were having to back the dumpster truck back out onto Old Last Cassis Highway, which was not a desirable situation, and the parking. Since then, the parking has been increased, not only from 38, which is 2.2, but now it's 40 spaces for 17 units. And in the meantime, we've been able to provide onsite a turnaround for the dumpster so it can use that alley to get out on Old Last Cassis Pike without backing it out.
Any other questions?
Just to verify, I believe that Mr. Wisnewski said these units, these are actually townhomes, and they will be sold as fee simple units.
That's correct.
They are not rental housing per se.
That's correct.
That they will be sold just like a home.
That's correct.
So it may or may not actually be a college student, but it would be likely that it would be.
Correct. Could be, but doesn't have to be.
Where it's located, but, okay. I just wanted to confirm it's not rental apartments.
But, excuse me, Mr. Huddleston, there's not, and I think I heard Gary say, there's not a restriction planned for these restrictive covenants that prohibit an owner from renting?
An individual owner could rent his unit if he so desired.
Certainly, it's feasible that every one of these will be rented out.
It's possible, but anything's possible in that regard.
Yes, but if there's no control over it, then it's almost certain that some of them...
Well, it's a different situation from an owner of an apartment complex renting out a number of units that they can go back and take care of. These are going to be individual owners that own an individual unit, and it's going to be their home, or it's going to be their investment, so that they, individual owners will be taking care of their own units.
Mr. Ives, let me just ask to make sure, though. For example, in housing, it could also, the homeowners in Stratford Hall could rent their home if they wanted to. Is that true?
I don't know. There are, there are some subdivisions and some developments that prohibit renting a unit. It has to be owner-occupied. I don't know about Stratford Hall, I've never read their covenants. But...
My subdivision, I can rent.
In my townhouse Zero Lot Line subdivision, you can rent also, and I'd been told by the developers that there was discussion about prohibiting rentals, but they did not.
Thank you, Mr. Huddleston.
Thank you.
Any other questions from members of the Planning Commission? If there are no questions or comments, we're ready for a motion.
Is there a reason that if it's going to remain in Stratford Hall, and I understand that overall, in my neighborhood, if you want to rent your house, that you can, but the fact that the remainder of Stratford Hall is under occupied, restricted, is there a reason why you would not, I guess, Bill, continue that restriction if this is going to continue to back up with Stratford Hall? Just to make it consistent with, with the property that it backs is a part of?
Are you asking that?
I'm just asking a question of Mr. Huddleston and Mr. Wisnewski. And I may have a very good reason for that, I'm just curious.
In this, in this type of development, it's not what you normally do, and I'll use an example. I've lived in a very nice townhome project that Mr. Wisnewski developed in front of River Bend. And, you know, everybody owns their own unit, but every once in a while, some, you know, somebody rents it out. And it's, it hasn't been a problem there.
And I know there are some neighborhoods here that have very large homes, and that from time to time end up being rentals or temporary rentals, and I know that it's just a unique situation for Stratford Hall, bring that up.
Will all of the new property being developed there, the undeveloped property right now that's, that's being developed, will all of that fall under the existing Stratford Hall HOA?
The rest of the Stratford Hall, Section 5, is under Strat, will be under Stratford Hall HOA, yes.
Okay.
And this area is not included in that.
Would Mr. Wisnewski had an option to form a separate HOA for the new sections?
I guess he could, yes.
But he chose to go ahead and keep it with the remainder of the HOA, the remainder of Stratford Hall?
No, he's got his, he'll have his own HOA. Is that correct?
I'm not talking about the development here, I'm talking about the new section, the newest part of Stratford Hall that's being developed.
Yes, Chairman Lamb, I don't own that section, Mr. Parks does.
Okay, I thought you were building in there.
Yes, I am. I'm buying the lots and building the homes, but no, I don't own that development, Mr. Parks does.
Okay, so you can't answer the question?
No.
Okay.
And so on our map that we're looking at, that we have, the open space that's right under the word Charleston, is that currently under development right now, the remaining part of Stratford Hall?
That would be part of Section 5. Section 5 Phase 1 has been recorded, and that would be the lots that you see, there's maybe eight or so, eight or 10 lots, then around where it's the end in Charleston. That part is Phase 1 of Section 5. Section 5 will go all the way up and include that entire part where Charleston, the word Charleston is shown.
Mm-hmm.
And it may be recorded in more than one phase.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Thank you, Ms. Huddleston. Okay. Any other questions or comments, once again? We're ready for a motion, one way or the other.
Mr. Chairman, I think from a Planning Commission standpoint, we approved this already. And in my eyes, what we approved originally versus what we're looking at now, all that's been done is additional improvements. And I think from the Planning Commission standpoint, looking at zoning, the fact that it's, you know, this particular piece of it is facing Old Last Cassis, I see nothing but improvements over what we approved the first time. So I would make a motion that we approve this amendment as has been presented tonight.
Motion is made. Is there a second?
You know, I'll have to agree with Ms. Jones. I don't, I mean, we approved it, I don't know what's different other than improvements that are made before, so I'll second the motion.
Motion is made and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to Item 5B, rezoning application for approximately 0.54 acres at 448 East Burton Street to be rezoned from OGR to PCD. Mr. Demetrius Nelson for Albert and Judy Nelson as applicants. Ms. Green.
Thank you, sir. Our next public hearing, our second public hearing of the evening, is for you to consider rezoning approximately 0.54 acres from its current OGR, that's General Office District Residential, to PCD, and that's Planned Commercial District. The property that's being requested to be rezoned is shown on the map before you in the color orange. You can see that it's located south along East Burton Street and just west of North Highland Avenue. The property's address is 448 East Burton Street. This property was formally constructed and used as a medical office, but has remained vacant since the owner retired as a medical practitioner. The applicant desires to use the property as a funeral home, and I've made an application to rezone the property to PCD to allow that use, as it is not currently permitted in the OGR district. You can see that the property is adjacent to property to the south, which is zoned RS8, Single Family Residential District. But the property that's contiguous with this parcel along the west and north are zoned OGR, General District, General Office District Residential. And you can see that there are some parcels that are zoned for commercial purposes along North Highland Avenue. The funeral homes and funeral directors are regulated by state license, and when the family looked at this property to look at opening a funeral home on the site, they realized they couldn't get a letter from the city saying that the use is permitted, because of course, it's not in the OGR district. We've included a definition of funeral home, taken from our zoning ordinance, and you can see that there are several parts to a funeral home. We would like to point out that funeral homes, although not permitted in the OGR zone according to the city zoning regulations, some of the uses that are typically associated with a funeral home are permitted, and those would be uses such as a chapel or a church or public assembly, and the office elements. There is a program book that's been included in the agenda materials that outlines the request from the Nelson family. Mr. Demetrius Nelson, I believe, is in attendance? Yes, there he is. And I believe he'd like to come up and say a few words before you do open your public hearing. You should conduct the public hearing prior to making your recommendation to City Council regarding this zoning change request. If you have any questions, of course, staff will be glad to answer them.
Mr. Nelson, welcome.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Chairman Lamb, Planning Commission. And we actually own and operate a funeral home in the Shelbyville area, and have done so since 2008, and do have my family here with me on today, and I'm acting as representative and spokesperson. Since our opening, actually on last year, 65% of our business was done in Rutherford County. Our family lives in Rutherford County. My dad and brother actually live on the, on the border, Bedford and Rutherford. It was kind of a natural, natural progression of our business for us to entertain an idea of opening a funeral home here. That was a good introduction to actually... That was a good, good introduction to actually what we've done. We've really not had any, any questions. One, one lady called me the other day and kind of asked a question about exactly what was happening. We explained it to her. Initially, talking with Mr. Adalot, the initial plan was for us, us just to have administrative offices, because everything, most everything we do is handled at the Shelbyville office. But under further discussion, we decided to go the, the PCD route. So here we are.
Okay. Any questions from Mr. Nelson before we open the public hearing? Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
That being said, I'll open the public hearing, asking if anybody to come forward that'd like to speak.
My name is Steve Baughman. I live at 315 North Manny, which is just around the corner from this location on Burton Street. I'd like to start off by saying, I'm not really against a funeral home. My biggest concern is parking in an event and what happens in that area. It seems like there's a lot of parking, but we all know that the hospital and the adjacent parking lots, all those are from the university, and I don't believe there's any covenants with the university to allow that for parking. And these streets are very narrow. If there is a funeral event of who knows how many people come to funerals, you can only park on one side of the street, on Burton Street. That overflow comes around onto my property, and you can't get around. You know, parking is very congested with that. We know what issues we've had with the Carriage Lane Inn when it was going on, and I've spoken many times about those issues. So this is another thing, thing. I'm all for the redevelopment, the reuse of this property down there, but parking has to be addressed. There is no parking on Highland. That's the main thoroughfare. So I just want to know more in this plan before we try and to approve it. How is that actually going to be addressed, and how are they going to do the parking? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Baughman. Close the public hearing.
I've got some questions.
Yes, sir, Ms. Yen.
How many parking spaces do we have with this?
I'm not certain. If I looked in the book, I might be able to find out. But I will point out, though, this is a, was developed as a medical office, and the medical office parking lot still remains. And in our, my review, and then off the cuff, I could not tell you what the numbers are. But I do recollect when I sat down with the family, that as we looked at the parking requirements for funeral homes, they had more parking spaces on-site than we would have required for a funeral home, based upon the standard in our zoning ordinance. I do recollect that, but the number escapes me right now as to what that is.
Best of your memory, though, the applicant would have sufficient parking that's for, that's describing or to code right now?
Yes, sir. He would meet and exceed our minimum requirements for funeral homes.
Okay. Ms. Yen.
I was going to say, this is a neighborhood in transition, because the university, the university has bought the old medical facility, and a lot of the doctors have moved out. So we need to do several things in a situation like this. We need to make sure that the property that is being, the, the use of the property is being changed is fairly compatible with the neighborhood. And I think this, this is. You're not going to have a lot of, a lot of major events where you're going to have hundreds of cars. Mr. Baughman is exactly right. Those streets are narrow, and there's hardly any parking on the streets. But as far as the use is concerned, we need to try to get as many compatible uses back into these neighborhoods where many doctors' offices have moved out and, and the hospitals not even there anymore. So I don't have a problem with the use. I am concerned about the parking, but...
One more thing on, on the issue of the, the parking. We had a link, actually, we had about four lengthy discussions on this application with the, with the, Mr. Nelson and his father and his brother. One of the things that their business about it is that when they have a funeral that's likely to involve a large turnout, their experience, they have, can predict that, they would typically want to move it to a larger venue, a church. Often, they will move to a church where they have a larger ability to house or to have a bigger congregation. And if you would allow Mr. Nelson, I'm sure he would come up and tell you a little bit more about the operations. In his opening presentation, he didn't delve into that. He allowed Ms. Agreen to remarks to stand, but I think he can tell you a little bit about how he operates and how he's going to address the parking, because we, we talked about that a lot.
Mr. Nelson.
There's way more parking spaces on-site. And Mr. Adalot is exactly right. What we did is we sat down and we actually took a survey of every funeral home in the Murphlesboro area, and we looked at it at different dates, at different times, at different years. Obviously, the nature of funeral homes is that there's not a lot of people there for any length of time. Most times, at visitations, it's in and out. Just the square footage of the property cannot accommodate over 100 people. The way we're setting up the chapel, the chapel only accommodates 60 people, because as Mr. Adalot pointed out, from our, from our experience, when it moves to a larger number of people, we're moving off-site. And 90%, 85 to 90% of our funerals are handled off-site. And so that's the nature of, of our business, and so most situations would not have a huge traffic situation at the funeral home.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Nelson. Mr. Huddleston, do you have a question?
You all answered it.
Any other questions? Now we're ready for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I feel like that this will be new activity, new vitality pumped into the neighborhood. I have some concerns about the parking, and I think you've addressed those. Your streets are narrow. It's almost impossible to park on those streets, and we've had some bad experiences with overflows for some other venues in there in the past. Some of the neighbors have been, what's the word I'm looking for? Put out a little bit because people are parking and they can't get in and out. But I think the nature of your business won't let that become abusive. I think it's a reasonable request, and I move for approval.
Motion is made and seconded by Mr. Wade. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item 5C, rezoning application for approximately 16.77 acres to be rezoned from PRD to RM16 along St. Andrews Drive. Larry Elliott on behalf of the Storage House Development is applicant. Ms. Green.
Thank you, sir. Our third public hearing this evening is for you to consider changing the zone for approximately 16.77 acres from its current PRD, Planned Residential District Zone, to RM16, that's Multi-Family Residential District. The property is located along St. Andrews Drive, just south of Highway 96, Old Fork Parkway or Franklin Road, and you can see it shown on the purple color on the map for you. It consists of several parcels, which were zoned for PRD to allow apartments in 2008. The PRD that currently exists on the property, as I mentioned, does allow apartments or multifamily complexes with a density of 17.17 dwelling units per acre. There's a total of 288 dwelling units on that 16.77 acres. For a variety of reasons, the property hasn't developed since the zoning plan was approved in 2008, and now the owner is coming before you, asking for you to change the zoning from PRD to a bulk zone of RM16, Multi-Family Residential District. The RM16 district allows development of multifamily developments by right with a density of 16 dwelling units per acre. So if the property is 16.77 acres, and you multiply that times 16, then they could have a maximum number of units of 268 dwelling units. You can see that that's a difference of 21 dwelling units from what's currently approved. However, there is an opportunity for the developers to get more than 16 dwelling units per acre if, by getting density bonuses, and those are spelled out in our zoning ordinance. If they provide amenities such as swimming pools, clubhouses, or recreational fields such as basketball fields or tennis courts, then they can gain a few additional dwelling units, but the density will be a little, still will be a little less than what is currently approved for. The Planning Commission should conduct a public hearing prior to making your recommendation regarding the zoning change from PRD to RM16. I believe Mr. Larry, I saw Mr. Larry Elliott earlier this evening, but I don't know where he is now. Oh, there he is. And he doesn't have anything to speak about, but I guess his representative, Mr. Bill Huddleston, would like to have some opening remarks before your public hearing.
Mr. Huddleston.
Thank you, Chairman Lamb, members of the Planning Commission. I'll be brief. I'm Bill Huddleston, President of Huddleston Steel Engineering, and I am here with Mr. Larry Elliott, who is a longtime owner of this property. We originally asked for a PRD, which was approved for 17 units per acre. That PRD is subject to some very specific details that would have to be adhered to, and it's made it very difficult to market the property, especially our timing couldn't have been worse. The recession hit right after we got this PRD approved, and we have found over time that without a specific buyer, the PRD process doesn't always work very well, and in this case, it hasn't. So we're asking for a standard RM16 zoning. These days, we adhere to more strict design guidelines through the site plan approval process. We're able to sort of police these types of developments better through our site plan approval process, so the PRDs aren't needed like they used to be. So, so we're asking for RM16 zoning for this property.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Huddleston? Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
If there's no questions, I'll open the public hearing, asking if anybody to come forward that'd like to speak.
Good evening, Chairman Lamb and members of the Planning Commission. My name is Judith Nockowitz, and I am a resident of Casey and Crossing's Patio Homes, which are located right off of St. Andrews Drive. There are currently 763 apartments in the immediate area of the proposed development. This new news as to the total that could be added would bring it up to about 1,535. My figure includes the Westbury Farms, which is located at the opposite end of St. Andrews, near to 99, but that still impacts all of the traffic. At the intersection of St. Andrews and Old Fork Parkway, there are a major shopping center, a McDonald's, two banks, and a drugstore. And if you go a little further down the strip center, we have a restaurant, we have a shoe store, we have everything. There are times during the day that traffic backs up from Old Fork Parkway to Woodway Drive, which is the exit for our development. We cannot get out onto St. Andrews. Sorry for the mess here. Adding to our situation with the apartment complexes that are currently there, there are approximately 1,200 Evergreen Farm homes. They are building villas at Evergreen Farms, and then they have already added 154 units. We also deal with elementary school traffic buses during the day. Traffic backs up from St. Andrews to the Waffle House. Now, I don't know if you all know our situation, but that would be very close to Casey and Lane, when people are trying to return home at night from their jobs. St. Andrews is a narrow, winding, two-lane road that creates a traffic nightmare in its current stage. Thinking of adding more traffic to this area will only add to the problems the current traffic situation brings. I am asking you to please reconsider this zoning. Our area is bursting, and we do not need more traffic. Thank you.
Chairman Lamb and committee members, I am Janie Reader, and I am president of the Casey and Crossing HOA. My husband Hollis and I live at 1021 Woodline Circle. We have 68 owner occupied homes in our community per our covenants. We do not want the 16.77 acres rezoned from PRD to RM16, multi-family dwellings. There is way too much traffic already from the existing homes and apartments. The apartment residents do not pay city taxes or county taxes. I hope you will not rezone this property to RM16. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, ma'am.
Hello, Chairman and members of the board. My name is Bruce Fio. I'm also a resident of that community there, 1071 Woodline Circle. And I'd just like to add one little anecdotal kind of thing to, to their lament about the traffic. We walk every morning a two-mile loop from our place down to where Kroger's and Coles' is and up the other way, Casey and Lane. And it's pretty comical, because in this little walk of one mile down, and we usually go down the Casey and Lane to come back to St. Andrews, we, we've already made friends with the cars that are going the other way. That's how bogged on it is already, in traffic. They're just stopped, and we're waving. They stop, open their windows, and talk to us. They call us ambassadors and all kinds of funny things. This is existing right now. They are backed up unbelievably, and we're all the time joking, what, you know, how bad it would be for them to be there. We see them, some people trying to take advantage of that middle lane, you know, and for us, that's kind of funny to watch that, and we stand there and watch, see how far they go down before they try to cut back in. We see people cutting across the parking lot where Coles' is, because it's, it's closed at that hour in the morning, you know, zooming across to try to, you know, to maybe get to where Kroger's parking lot is. They're desperate to get to work. Excuse me. I mean, I just think it's pretty funny as it is right now, but I wouldn't think it'd be funny if I was trying to go to work, or if I was trying to get out for any other reason. I mean, that's all I wanted to add to it.
Thank you, sir.
Chairman Lamb, members of the Planning Commission, I'm here on behalf of the owners of the property, Mr. Larry Elliott and his partners. Maybe there's a little misconception of what we're...
Mr. Harney, would you state your name?
I'm sorry. I'm John Harney. Maybe there's a little bit of misconception of what we're after in trying to accomplish tonight. The present zoning on the property allows more units to be built, in all likelihood, than what we're asking to rezone to a straight RM16 zoning. The main reason for this is back when several of these apartment-type properties were being zoned PRD back a few years ago, we were trying to anticipate what a building would look like, what an architectural design looked like, what style apartment that would be on the property. That hadn't worked out. That's the reason a lot of these PRDs and these specific pub plans have been asked to be brought back to regular zoning. We've had two or three different people looking at this property, but they are all apartment developers that do this across the country, and they all have their own sets of plans, their own style of buildings, that sort of thing. The anticipation of this rezoning is that actually it'll be a net less result of units on the property than is presently approved for. But part of this also is a plan of trying on the property than is presently approved for, but part of this also is a plan of trying to get an access out directly onto 96, as well as St. Andrews. If that's accomplished, and that would have to come before you as a site plan in the future, that would give another outlet to this property. So we're not asking for increased density. We're actually, in all likelihood, will have less density than what is presently approved for.
Mr. Harney, would the applicant be willing to make that stipulation?
I can't speak for the applicant, but he's nodding and says yes, he would.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Harney?
I don't know if it's Mr. Harney or Mr. Huddleston.
Well, let me close the public hearing before Mr. Harney. Thank you. You have anything else to say right now?
No, that's it.
We may need to call you back up. Would anybody else? Ma'am, you've already been up once. Ma'am, I'm sorry.
I can't.
No, ma'am.
This is new information.
I'm sorry. Has everybody spoke?
My name is Larry Nocowicz, and I am-
You're welcome, sir. Just in case.
We understand.
Well, we've got to play the game, folks. I'm not sure I'm going to be able to translate. Well, anyway, how, she's asking, how can you build a road that's going to go around this traffic when in its way happens to be retail businesses? We will ask the staff to go over what was previously approved. Okay. And another issue, I'd just like to, because I also am a witness to what has been going on with people dodging the traffic, picking new ways to get out, crossing through the shopping centers, are going down lanes that are indicated for straight-ahead traffic versus turn lanes, but who do you think's there at the end of the line? A police officer, writing citations every morning. I mean, it's incredible, it's kind of funny to see it, but it's terrible for the people who have to put up with that day in and day out. So I also implore you that give this strong consideration. We have enough in the way of multiple housing, and thank you very much.
Who wants a rock question?
Would anybody else like to speak? Thank you, sir, for your comments, by the way. Anybody else? Seeing no one come forth, I'll close the public hearing. Mr. Elliott?
Mr. Adelot, just to be clear, if this request to rezone was never made and it stayed the PRD that it currently is, right now, if they found a builder with the right set of plans, they could build, right now, two hundred and eighty-eight apartments on this property.
I believe that's correct.
Without this, if we approve nothing tonight-
That's correct. I believe that's a correct number.
Two hundred and eighty-eight apartments is what's already approved to be on there before this request. This request actually reduces that from two eighty-eight to two sixty-eight or two sixty-seven. Is that correct?
That's correct. Right now, the development is allowed seventeen point one seven units per acre is what the current PRD zoning allows. The RM16 allows sixteen dwelling units per acre.
Okay. Anything else, Mr. Elliott?
Refresh my memory, Mr. Adelot, because I know you, my memory is nowhere near as good as yours. Previously, when we approved this as a PRD, it had an access onto St. Andrews as well as one going out onto 96.
That is correct, and this property will still have the ability to have access onto Highway 96. If you will put the illustration back up, Ms. Green, I think that in the very top of the illustration, you'll see the, right there in Highway 96, and she's showing the cursor, that's a right-of-way that will have a public street constructed in it that will allow direct access for this property to Highway 96. And that's with or without the PRD zoning. That's independent of the zoning.
Okay, that, I think, answers the question that the speaker had a while ago. Do you have any other comments, Mr. Adelot?
Yes, sir. The second lady who spoke emphatically made the comment that apartment residents don't pay property taxes, and there is some truth to that in the sense that they don't pay a property tax bill directly to, for their taxes. But what I will point out is that the owners of multifamily property do pay taxes, and they pay taxes at a commercial rate. And in essence, the residents pay the owner in their rent, and the owners pay a lot of taxes. In fact, multifamily developments are some of our biggest property taxpayers in this county, and they do pay substantial amounts of property taxes to the city and to the county.
And according to Mr. Nocowicz, they pay traffic citations in lieu of property taxes. Okay, any other questions of the applicant or Mr. Adelot? And we did get a commitment that there would not be a net increase in the property, the number of units in here.
I don't think, I don't think they can.
Can we, I mean, if we do have this straight zoning on it, then we can't have restrictions like that, can we, Mr. Adelot?
No, you can't. It's either rezoned RM16 and the rules that apply to RM16, but no restrictions. You know, developers voluntarily doing it, that's fine. It's been my experience, and he's a man of his word, but that's all that we would be doing, is taking him for his word.
But considering the property, I don't believe there's any way they can get twenty-one density bonuses to even get up to the two hundred and eighty-eight dwelling units. I just don't think practically it's possible.
That is a very odd-shaped piece of property.
They might get three, but they're not going to get twenty-one.
Something I will point out in that regard, if you look at the map again, you'll see exactly where the requested area balloon points to. That is a existing detention area. That detention area is rather large, and it's going to take a big bite out of the placement of buildings, and it's almost rectangular in shape. If you, on the left side of the illustration, you'll see the word right there. She is pointing to it with the cursor. That whole thing is a detention area that already exists that serves part of that subdivision in that area, and it eats up a big chunk of that property.
Okay, any other questions?
Just so I'm clear, I know this is not site plan, but are we saying for sure that there's going to be access on 96, or we're working on access to 96?
I'm saying that access to the property is essentially, the right-of-way has been dedicated, the street has not been constructed. Mr. Elliott has an obligation to build that street, and he may, with future developers, they may do that as a public, they may do it, he may do it himself, or he may make that as an obligation to the future buyer. Either way, there will be a public street there.
Okay. Prior to the development of this property?
Possibly along with the development of this property.
Okay, all right.
Because often when they mobilize for the development, construction, they'll build the roads as well, and the sewer and all those sort of things.
Well, I sympathize with the residents in the area, particularly the ones who have spoken tonight, because they're absolutely right that traffic conditions are horrible out there, not just at rush hour, but practically any time of day. So I certainly am sympathy with their comments. Any other questions? If no, we're ready for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Multiple seconds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you for coming tonight. Item 5D, the rezoning application for approximately fourteen point nine five acres to be rezoned from RS15, which is approximately one point nine three acres, and Commercial Highway, approximately thirteen point zero two acres, to RM16 along Agri Park Drive. Mr. Russell Morris, on behalf of RFM Development is the applicant. Ms. Green?
Thank you, sir. The next public hearing is to consider zoning a property that's located between Agri Park Drive and Gresham Lane from its current zoning district, which is both RS15 and CH, to RM16. You can see the majority of the property is zoned currently CH, and that's Commercial Highway District, with a smaller portion of it fronting along Gresham Lane, being zoned RS15. And RS15 is a single-family residential district with a minimum lot size of fifteen thousand square feet. The subject property, of course, is located along both streets. A portion of the property directly fronts on Gresham Lane. Gresham Lane is a substandard street, which we would expect to be improved in some, at some point in the future, but we don't have a specific time span for that. There is a cellular tower located on this property, and it's located on the western portion closer to Gresham Lane. The property, although it has been one parcel for quite some time now, has two different zones on the property, and that has to do with when it was annexed. Currently, approximately thirteen point zero two acres of the, of their subject property is zoned CH, and that was zoned CH soon after it was annexed in 1991. The western portion of the property, which is fronting along Gresham Lane, has been zoned RS15 as an interim zoning since it was annexed in 1996. You can see that the property to the north is zoned PCD, and that's Planned Commercial District, and that is the Lane-Agri Park site. Property to the south and to the east is zoned Commercial Highway District and has several undeveloped parcels, but also a few developed parcels. The property that is along Gresham Lane continues with this property is zoned RS15 and is developed with somewhat large estate lots with single-family homes. Under the proposed RM16 district, it's possible that the property could be developed with a multifamily complex of two hundred and forty dwelling units. Such a development would be expected to have its primary access from Agri Park Drive, since that street is something that's, is a street that's been somewhat recently built by the city and meets all city standards. You can see it from the shape of the lot that there was even a street stub made to this property. And also, we would want to limit the access to Gresham Lane because it is a substandard street. The Planning Commission should conduct a public hearing prior to making your recommendation regarding the request to zone this one fourteen point nine five acre property to RM16. Any questions? Staff will be glad to answer them either before or after the public hearing.
Any questions for the staff? Now that I'll open the public hearing, I'm asking anybody to come forward that'd like to speak.
Chairman Lamb and the commission members. My name is George Caffey. I live at 601 Gresham Lane. My property is the dwelling that is on, that actually this apartment complex would back up to. I am adjacent to the agricultural park, the center there. I do object to this zoning, simply because my property has already been severely affected when the county, in their infinite wisdom, decided to put this Ag Center building within fifty feet of my bedroom. Now we're talking about putting an apartment complex directly behind me. In effect, it will kill any opportunity for me to be able to sell my property at any point in time as residential property. I had, in fact, listed this property twice before in the five years since they built the Ag Center with no success at all, simply because people are not interested in living right next to the Ag Center. Now we're wanting to put an apartment complex directly behind me, which will even affect me more severely. Now, I understand the applicant's desire to develop this area, but I'm not sure that they understand exactly what this will do to the area. The folks that spoke just a few minutes ago were talking about traffic. Well, Agri Park Drive directly runs into St. Andrews, the same intersection at Old Fork. It's going to dump that many more vehicles out there at the same intersection, which is already almost impassable at four to five o'clock in the afternoon and seven to eight o'clock in the morning. I really don't see the need to have this property zoned in this manner. This property itself is part of land which has been in my family for years, and my father and my uncle owned the property behind it and eventually sold it, and I'm sure the developer and the engineers are familiar. Number one, it's full of rock, I mean, deep bedrock. So there's definitely going to be blasting there to ever develop this property. Secondly, the left-hand corner of this property, which would be left-hand behind my property, left-hand corner, in any good rainfall, holds water as a pond for a week to ten days at a time. So you've got a drainage issue to start with there. The property on the far side, which is, I believe, zoned RS15 at present, that borders Gresham. That's immediately on the other side of my brother. Well, that lot, there's about probably an acre and a half there. I'm not sure exactly, but somewhere in that area. That whole lot, the whole front of that lot, at least a hundred and fifty foot deep, stays underwater for several days to a week when we have heavy rains. So you've got two issues of drainage there. You know, I would like to see the commission, if possible, defer any action on this. We haven't seen any plans. Now, I will say, my brother and I met with Mr. Harney, and he was generous enough to discuss this with us a couple of months ago, and, but we've seen no detailed plans of what's actually going to be put there. There's a fence row that is approximately seventy feet behind my property. That fence row has probably eighteen to twenty trees that are fifty to sixty-foot high. You take out that fence row, I have no privacy whatsoever. Now, you can't replace that privacy with a six, eight-foot berm with some saplings. That's not going to happen. So you're even more adversely affecting my property, and I'm asking the commission to please, at this time, not approve this zoning. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Caffey. Anybody else?
My name is Steve Caffey. I live at 591 Gresham Lane, and I'm the lucky one that's affected by two sides of this. And without any plans or anything, we really don't know what's going on and what we're curious about. And what I didn't understand, are they going to have, if this is approved and everything, the apartments go in, will there be access for these apartment people to get onto Gresham Lane? I didn't really understand that, and we haven't seen any plans. And a lot of the concerns my brother did raise is, of course, of the flooding and how will that be handled? I've had, I have heard talk about the possibility of them wanting to put a retention pond, which would be right beside my house, and I was curious about that, too, but without the plans. Right now, we really don't know what's going on, except that they want to rezone it. And I really can't be in favor of that type. We were hoping there'd be maybe a small subdivision back there one day, but not apartment complexes and the traffic and everything else that my brother reiterated about, too. So just a lot more questions right now that just don't seem to be able to be answered. But right now, I just got to vote no for it. That's all for right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Caffey. Anybody else?
Mr. Chairman, members of the committee. My name is Tony Emmanuel. I am the immediate next-door neighbor to this property. I am the L-shaped property, which you can see in yellow here, and I operate the Mulch Company on that property. I have been there since two years ago. I purchased that property specifically because I was surrounded by CH, Commercial Highway zoning. I have given each of you a letter of my objections to being placed next door to two hundred and forty residential families. My prop, my business is not compatible with people trying to live in a residential neighborhood on my fence line. My business is compatible with Commercial Highway zoning. I am in the horticultural business. I fit in well with Lane-Agri Park. I fit in well with the animal control place at the corner, but to put residential right next door to me where I have spent a large amount of money citing my business specifically to be deep within a Commercial Highway zoning area is just a train wreck waiting to happen. These two hundred and forty neighbors will be deeply disturbed by my Commercial Highway Zone business being their next-door neighbor. When I built this property and Mr. Huddleston developed it for me, the assumption was that there was no residential around me, and so I have no buffer zones to this property next door. And I- And I hope you won't consider this application, just as I am sure you would not consider me coming in front of you, asking you to change a residential zoning to accommodate my commercial highway use mulch company. If this was turned around, I would sincerely hope that you would not approve a change from RM sixteen to Commercial Highway. And this is putting the two hundred and forty families that will be right next door to me at a tremendous disadvantage and it's effectively changing the rules of the game after we started the game. This is a Commercial Highway District connecting two exceptionally busy streets and just because it hasn't been fully developed right now, I think to change the rules of the game and turn this into residential is just not fair on a company like myself and I sincerely hope that you will not change the zoning. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Emanuel. Anybody else?
Chairman Lamb, members of the commission, I'm Bill Huddleston, president of Huddleston Steel Engineering. I'm here with Mr. Russ Morris, who is the developer of this property, he hopes, and we're asking for rezoning tonight from Commercial Highway to RM sixteen. We do have a plan that we're working on and we'll be happy to share that with the Caffeys and with Mr. Emanuel. We are sympathetic to their concerns and because of that, we would like to make a couple of commitments to them tonight and go ahead and get them on the record. We all, we realize, and they may not realize, but we know that we will be submitting, if we get our zoning approved, we'll be submitting site plans back to you for site plan approval and we can make sure that the issues that we talk about tonight get addressed at that point. First of all, along Mr. Caffey's line, we will have a Type C landscape buffer required. We will commit tonight to increase that to a Type D landscaping buffer. He talked about dumping traffic down at Old Fort Parkway and St. Andrews. This property is really closer to Medical Center Parkway and we anticipate more of our traffic going and coming from that direction, Medical Center Parkway direction, instead of Old Fort Parkway. Keep in mind that the property owners of this property helped pay for Agri Park Drive. The city had Agri Park Drive built and the city expected that traffic would be using Agri Park Drive from development and that development hadn't happened so far, but it is built to handle traffic from this type of development. There will be pre-blast surveys required. We know there's rock on the property. There's rock on just about most of the properties I deal with here in this county. And so, we do have a procedure where pre-blast surveys are required and we're not allowed to impact anybody's property that's adjacent to us. We will provide proper drainage plans for this project. We've provided them before when it was a commercial project. We were able to handle the drainage then and we will be able to handle the drainage when we prepare site plans for the site plan review process. Again, we'll be happy to meet with the Caffeys and share our plans with them as we develop them. We're not putting apartment buildings in the small strip beside Mr. Steve Caffey. It doesn't make sense. It's just too narrow to do that and we will not have direct access onto Gresham Lane. We will have emergency access. We've met with staff and they indicated that a gated access with a Yelp mode for commercial, for, excuse me, emergency vehicles would be appropriate and that's the only access that we're going to construct to Gresham Lane. Mr. Emanuel, I've worked with him before. He's a very pleasant gentleman to work with and I appreciate his comments. We talked a little on the phone yesterday and then I went out there today to sort of see, see his development, see what it looked like out there. I want to, I want to share a couple of pictures with you and what I'm going to do is circle in red this significant forest that's between his project and this property. And in both pictures, you'll be able to see the cell tower that's on this property towards the back of it that'll kind of keep you oriented. So you'll see how much landscaping is already there between these two properties. Again, this property, we want to make another commitment and this one is for Mr. Emanuel. Instead of a Type A buffer, which would be normally required for this development, we're committing to a Type C buffer along Mr. Emanuel's property.
Mr. Huddleston, is it probable that you will be able to help with the drainage that comes across some of the backs of the Caffey property?
We had, we've already worked on it when it was a commercial subdivision, so we know we'll be able to deal with it as a multifamily subdivision.
I need to close the public hearing, so why don't you wind up your comments and then we may-
My comments are wound up.
We may ask you for a recall, okay?
Thank you.
Is there anybody else that'd like to speak? Seeing no one come forward, I'll close the public hearing. Planning Commission members, do you have any questions of Mr. Huddleston or the applicant?
I'd like to make a-
Mr. Young.
Mr. Huddleston, where'd you go? There you are. The Caffeys have owned this property a long time and two of them live directly behind this and there is a tree line that runs through the back. I would stress strongly that if that tree line could be saved, that would be a wonderful buffer between their residences in this particular property.
We'll take a look at that during the design process because if we can preserve that tree line, we wouldn't have to pay for the Type D buffer up against the Caffey. So that would save us money if we can save it. We'll take a look at doing that. I don't know at this time if it can actually be saved or not. If it can't, we'll commit to that Type D buffer, which is very significant not only with trees, but also with bushes between the trunks of the trees.
Also, the back of their property might be a good place for a retention or detention pond, which would give more separation from the apartments to their living quarters. And also, in the past, we have encouraged developers to put their higher units away from residential property, different segment of the development. So that might be something that we, that should be something that we should consider in that also.
We'll look at, we'll look at all those things when we're in the design process for the site plan.
Mr. Huddleston, I don't guess you-
I'm finished.
I don't guess you know if that large tree line behind the Caffey's house might coincide with the line on here that's dotted that shows the division of the RS fifteen and the Commercial Highway zoning, do you?
I'm not sure.
It's very close to it. In fact, that was part of what was the line where they established the zoning way back in the day when the Commercial Highway was annexed first. They annexed back to that fence row. So that's just about the location.
I'm just saying if, if the rezoning was stopped there or development was stopped at that fence line right there, that might mitigate a lot of the problems that the Caffeys are fearing could happen there like Mr. Young was alluding to. But it might be where, before we make a final decision, we might want to see if the developer can meet with the other parties affected out there to see if you had any type of resolve.
We'll be happy to meet with them and we've already, we've already said we'll meet with them as we're preparing our site plan.
I think a large fear that they have is they haven't seen a site plan.
Right. And we're, and we're happy to share, share with them what we've got.
Mr., I'm sorry. The comment that Mr. Emanuel made with respects to if he was to try to come in here and zone an area next to residential development, Commercial Highway, and put his company there, that in all likelihood, this commission would not approve. Whether that's true or not, but I would be inclined to say that that's, that's probably true. At least, I'm not sure that I would vote for it. And so, back to the whole reason why I voted for the, for the zoning on two thirty-one with respects to the restaurant, being in front of that to be inconsistency with other types of development or on two thirty-one, I'm not sure, and this is just me, but I'm not sure that I can vote for the rezoning of this property based upon the impact of the neighbors and the fact that it was, you know, planned, not planned, but originally was Commercial Highway to begin with.
Well, I would, I would characterize this as a transitional area. You've got single-family west of here, you've got the interstate east of here. South of here is, is the mulch facility. North of here is the institutional development, which is the Agri Park development. Now, you know, I was out there today. It's a, it's a pretty, it's, it's not an industrial feeling area. The mulch company doesn't give you the feel that, that you're out in a, in a manufacturing or warehouse type area. I mean, it's a pretty serene type business. You can see from the pictures, it's, he's, he's developed a very nice-looking facility out there. There's, there's tons of landscaping. That's one of the things when we brought his site plan to you, he wanted to maintain a lot of landscaping and even plant extra and that's what he's done. So I would, I would characterize this as a, as a transitional area. Again, single-family to the west, I twenty-four to the east, you know, you've got Old Fort to the south and, and Medical Center Parkway to the north and there's apartments in each, any, all those areas.
Mr. Huddleston, you're more aware than I, but I'd say there's a long list of permitted uses in the Commercial Highway zone that would be more obtrusive upon residential, single-family homes than perhaps nice residential apartments.
Absolutely, and they're permitted by right currently.
I don't, I think I'd still like to see some kind of compromise on what's going to happen along the back, back there pertaining to the tree line Mr. Caffey was alluding to and how far and other commitments that you might make as far as the height of the buildings being built back there like Mr. Young was talking about. And we might be able to defer this decision till you have a chance to meet with them to see if you can move along with some type of agreement.
We could probably meet with them within the next two weeks if they're amenable to that.
Mr. Chairman, because I almost think it, it looks like, you know, you'd want to look at possibly even leaving out that one point nine three acres. I mean, if you can, I don't know what-
I thought about that, but I don't know how the city would look at that as far as their emergency crash gate access. If you don't put any, yeah, if you don't put, well, if you-
For access?
If you don't put any development back there as far as rental units or anything, I think, you know, that would be important if the city is looking at needing that connection back there for emergency use.
Mr. Huddleston, how far are you from a site plan? I think that's going to give us a lot of-
Yeah, we have a preliminary site plan, so we'll be happy to. I got a feeling it's fifty, sixty, seventy feet back. I'm not sure exactly, but we have located it. We can pull it up. If they want to meet within a week, we can meet with them and talk about it again at your next meeting.
It would be very possible for us to have this back on the agenda for our day meeting on the twenty-first. I think that's the meeting date.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Huddleston.
Thank you.
I'd like to call for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I think a viewing of the sketches, the site plan is going to solve a lot of problems for everybody and I think that meeting with the neighbors out there is imperative to let them see what they need. So I'm pleased we defer this till our next day meeting.
Bush has made the second all in favor. Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
One negative vote.
And I'd like to add that the staff has not seen any site plan either. We'd kind of like to see it as well, if that'd be all right. They're not in the field to do that.
It might help if that meeting is here at City Hall, perhaps, to have input from the staff and where you can weigh in on any questions.
I'm going to contact the team tomorrow and see how staff may be able to be involved to be part of the meeting if we can.
Okay. Item E, rezoning application for approximately two acres at forty-one oh seven Manson Pike to be rezoned from RS fifteen to Commercial Fringe. Mr. Matt Taylor on behalf of Homes By Design LLC is applicant. Ms. Green.
Thank you, sir. Our next public hearing is for you to consider rezoning two parcels which are located south of Manson Pike from their current zone district, which is RS fifteen in that single-family residential district with a, which permits single-family uses by right with a minimum lot size of fifteen thousand square feet. Two CF, Commercial Fringe District. The maps were in place before you and from the map you can see the properties identified in blue. The property to the north across Manson Pike is in the unincorporated area of Rutherford County and the parcel just across from these properties is used for agricultural purposes. The adjacent property to the east is zoned RS fifteen, that's single-family residential district and is currently a rather large estate lot which exceeds the fifteen thousand square foot minimum. Properties to the south, which you can see are developed single-family subdivisions, are zoned RS twelve in that single-family residential district with a minimum lot size of twelve thousand square feet. The contiguous property to the west is zoned CF, Commercial Fringe District, and you can see that the properties on the corner of Brinkley Road and Manson Pike are zoned CF, the Fringe Commercial District. The request before you is to zone or to rezone approximately two acres consisting of two parcels to Commercial Fringe, Fringe District. The parcel that's on the east has requested this zoning change request. Currently, the homeowner is operating a home-based business which has grown to a point that's no longer compliant with the existing zoning. Our zoning ordinance allows homeowners to have home-based businesses within their home so long as they meet certain criteria and standards, mainly that people aren't coming and going from the house like it's a regular place of business. So if you can think of a type of use where you would have your home office and that may be where you do your paperwork, computer work, take phone calls, but you don't have any visits from any clients or customers, that's something that we can approve administratively and actually we do on a very frequent basis. And sometimes contractors will have their home-based businesses there. And Mr. Holmes, whose business is Homes By Design, has been operating a home-based business which has been successful and because it's successful, it's growing beyond the point of being allowed by, with a home-based business. So he's seeking a zoning change to CF. Between his parcel and the adjacent Dollar General store, which is currently constructed in zone CF, there is a vacant parcel. And in our last meeting, when this was scheduled for a public hearing, Planning Commission decided to include that vacant parcel as additional area to study it for zone, changing the zone to CF as well. So you can see that those two parcels would both be zoned CF. So the public hearing that you'll be holding this evening will be to consider changing the zone of both those parcels and with the option of pulling back and not including the parcel, which did not request the zoning change request. This property is located within the Black Men Land Use Study and in that study, this is identified as a local commercial node and in this study, that is identified as a node to support the shopping needs of the residents of Black Men. Overall square footage of this node should not exceed a hundred and fifty thousand square feet at full buildout. So it's our belief that this would not be inconsistent with the Black Men Community Land Use Plan. You should conduct a public hearing prior to making your recommendation regarding the zoning change request. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them, but before your public hearing, we'll invite Mr. Matt Taylor to the lectern to introduce the project and maybe hit some of the areas I may have missed.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Green. Chairman Lamb, members of the Planning Commission, I will be brief. Most of what Ms. Green said pretty much wraps it up. I think the primary thing that is kicking him into needing a rezone is that he's grown as so busy, he needs to add an employee and I don't believe that is a, is allowed under the home-based business. So I think the operations that you see there will be very similar to what's going on right now. The primary differences will be, we'll have to do a site plan to bring it in compliance with- with the city zoning ordinance, such as making sure the parking's paved and stripped off. We'll have to add some landscape buffers, and I don't think, at this point, we're not talking about adding any square footage to the house. He wants to maintain the house. So, I think it'd be more of the same.
Okay.
I'll be happy to answer any questions. Mr. McRee is here as well.
Any questions, Mr. Taylor at this time?
Thank you, ma'am.
In that case, I'll open the public hearing and ask anybody to come forward that'd like to speak. I guess you did a good job, Mr. Taylor. Seeing nobody come forward, I'll close the public hearing. Any comments or questions from members of the Planning Commission? If not, we're ready for our motion.
Mr. Lamb, I make a motion to approve.
Second the motion.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Item F is a PRD amendment for the Summersby subdivision along Elam Road to reduce the number of required side entry garages. Mr. Matt Taylor on behalf of Summersby LLC is applicant. Ms. Green.
Thank you, sir. The next public hearing is for you to consider amending an existing PRD or planned residential district. The PRD was approved in 2004, and at that time, there was a cap of, or there was a minimum standard that required 25% or more of the homes be constructed with side entry garages, and it was anticipated that those would be mostly on corner lots. The owner is requesting to change that standard, so it's something that you'll need to hold a public hearing on before making your recommendation. I'm going to invite Mr. Matt Taylor again back to the lecturn so he can give more details about this change, what's the motivation of the developer, and what the results will be.
Yes, thank you again, Ms. Green. I believe that the developer has gotten to a point, one, the design of the subdivision changed slightly, so we eliminated some corner lots, and with the homes that are being built out there, I think they've been well-received. They've been, they're starting to take up, are being absorbed much more quickly, and they would like to continue with that same home. Don't want to change any materials, square footages, just want to maintain that consistency throughout. So, again, I'll be available for any questions that you might have.
Any questions? Thank you, Mr. Taylor. I'll open the public hearing and ask anybody to come forward that'd like to speak. Must be getting late. Seeing nobody come forward, I'll close the public hearing. Are there any questions or comments from members of the Planning Commission?
I'll move for a pro for the chairman.
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Item G is an annexation petition for approximately 186.6 acres along the east fork of Stones River, west of Highway 231, Lebanon Pike, city of Murfreesboro is applicant. Ms. Green.
Thank you. Our next public hearing is for you to consider an annexation petition and the adoption of a plan of services for property located along the west fork of the Stones River. You can see this property is the snake-like shape that's on the map before you in shaded orange, and it is that shape because it does follow the east fork of the Stones River. You've been provided with a plan of services and a feasibility study in your iPads, which outlines the services that the city can provide to this property, and provides a timeframe for when we can provide them. This property is owned, parts of these properties are zoned by the city of Murfreesboro, and the rest are owned by the Corps of Engineers, the U.S. Corps of Engineers. This petition is being made by the city of Murfreesboro so that we can create a greenway that's currently in the planning stages to be located within the city of Murfreesboro for operation, management, and emergency services. So, we're going to build a greenway along the river. We want the jurisdiction to be clear, so if there is a need for medical first responders, we know indeed that our fire department should and will respond to this property. And if it's not in the city of Murfreesboro, sometimes that adds confusion. You'll see from the plan of services that not all services are available to the property, but they're not necessarily needed. So, because this will be a trail, there's no need for sewer. It's not available, but, and there are no restroom facilities located along it, so it's not really a necessary service. So, I think you'll see that throughout the plan of services when you read it. There is a portion of Highway 231 right-of-way that's included in the study area, and that's about 3.4 acres. The subject area is contiguous with current city limits, and it's located within the city's urban growth boundary, and so it's staff's belief that it can be annexed without any negative effects. The Planning Commission should conduct a public hearing prior to making your recommendation regarding the adoption of the plan of services and approval or denial of the annexation petition.
Okay. I'll open the public hearing and ask anybody to come forward that'd like to speak.
2694 Central Valley Road, which is just right on the upper corner of this property, the old Coleman Farm. I grew up on Central Valley Road, lived there about 40 years, and over the last five years, I've asked several different times. I went to a meeting, actually, I went into SU, a training session when I was working on the county planning commission, when this was first brought up, when I first started hearing about it. And I've been asking questions ever since on how we're going to marry a walking trail over or with the hunting rights that are there now, and along with other uses that's happening, hunting, fishing, horseback riding, and everything else. And I can't get an answer, as of this point. I know it's still in the planning portions, but, you know, I just don't understand why we're, where we're at right now with annexing that land, because, you know, I know where it's going on past that. It'll come on around past my property and everything else on down towards East Fork, I think is in the future plan. But I just don't understand why we're having to go that far outside of the city. And I guess my main question is, though, how, what will you do with the hunting rights with this?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Planning Commission, my name is Jim Carroll. I live at 2262 Central Valley Road. My property joins the Coleman property on the west side, something 2,800 feet or so. What I wanted to, this is sort of like addressing the tip of the iceberg here with this proposal for this annexation here, because what has been going on for a lot of years now is the plan for the greenway. And I was hoping that when Congressman Bart Gordon retired, that this might go away, but it doesn't, doesn't appear it has. What is, is there's a horse trail that runs down the east, I mean, excuse me, the west side of the river, some 17 miles. To my knowledge, it's the only public horse trail in the county. And so, we have a lot of people who enjoy trail riding, me being one of them, that come in and use that. What has been proposed that we've been, that we horse people have been against all along is to put an adjoining trail that would be parallel to, to trails, is what they said, of the greenway would be going along with the horse trail, but they'd be on the same side of the river. And we, I, for one, have tried to propose that they put the greenway on the other side of the river, and there'd be no, no conflict there. And I think the plan is, is to go all the way to Smyrna and perhaps Nashville with this greenway at some point in time. And some of us think there's already been enough money spent on greenways at this point. The last I heard, I think, there's probably been $30 million or so that has been spent so far in developing these greenways. The greenway, though, that is being proposed, and looks like it's going to happen, is, though, like I say, is going to parallel then the horse trail that's been in there for at least 40 years or longer. And bicycles and runners or joggers or walkers probably not afraid of horses, but horses are afraid of, afraid of bicycles, particularly because they don't make any noise, they just sneak up on you. So, that's the biggest concern that I have, and I have tried to come to every meeting where this has been, anything's been being said, to see what we can do about relocating the greenway to the other side of the river. In other words, to the, I guess you'd say the north side, because this, they, and so, I know that the fact that the county, I mean, I'm sorry, the city, had bought the Coleman property, and that property belongs to the city now, makes it easy then to, for all this to happen. And this proposal for this annexation here is just icing on the cake, because the plan for the greenway, I guess, is, it, I've been to a lot of meetings, and it looks like it's pretty far along, but because of the economic slowdown, and I guess it's what has happened, but, but the problem with all of this, though, then, is that there's going to be a lot of money spent then to maintain that greenway, because it's in the floodplain, for the most part. And I know that, because whenever, when the river gets up, or when it gets real wet, there then, we horse people don't ride the trail. We just, and so, there's no money being spent then by government then to maintain the horse trail. It's being volunteer labor, that's been taking care of this for a lot of years. So, anyhow, that's, that's what I'm here for then, and it's not directly related to what, I guess, what you're asking, being asked to do, but it nevertheless does relate.
Yes, sir. Thank you for coming. Anybody else?
Yeah.
Okay.
My name is Speer Randolph. I live here in Murfreesboro at 308 East Lidle Street. I own some property across the river from where this proposed annexation is going to take place. I'd like to go on the record right now as saying I am totally opposed to moving it across the river. I don't want anything to do with it across on my side. What I do want to know is, is will this impact my property in any way, shape, form, or fashion from what it is already zoned, and any restrictions in one area? That's what I'd like to know.
Thank you, Mr. Randolph.
Thank you for your time.
Anybody else? Okay, I'll close the public hearing. Mr. Adelot, can you address some of the questions and concerns?
I will address Mr. Randolph's question, and I'm going to defer to Mr. Ives on the others. With regards to will this annexation and then the subsequent zoning affect Mr. Randolph in any form, any shape, form, or fashion in terms of zone or restrictions? I'm not aware that it will. The city will place it in a P-zone, a park zone, but we will have no jurisdiction over his property to require him to build any buffers against it or anything like that. Wouldn't try and don't have the ability. So, I expect that there would be no effect upon him.
Okay. Mr. Ives?
Well, I guess first off, this trail is being built by the Corps of Engineers. It is all Corps of Engineers money that will build the trail. They have had the primary role in planning it, and I think from the inception, it's been planned as a multi-use facility with combination of horseback riding facilities on a natural soft trail and hiking, biking activities on a hard surface trail. There are, certainly don't have the plans solid in my mind. There's a couple of places where, particularly on bridges, where the trail's going to have to be shared, because bridges are expensive, and there are a couple of places where the trails will cross, so that at one, at some points, the walkers are closer to the river than horseback riders. At other points, the horseback riders will be closer to the trail than walkers. The, our proposal for annexation is to make more clear and improve the safety of the trail by making it clear that the city's got full jurisdiction to, as being part of the, within the city limits, to police it, to patrol it, to respond to any emergencies. It can be difficult when there's, when there are activities that the city's involved in that are outside city limits. In some of them where we have that situation, the city actually owns property outside the city limits, and of course, we do own the Walter Hill Park, and we certainly have the right to patrol that, whether it's inside city limits or not, because we own it. A little less clear on the Corps of Engineers property, and certainly, they're not going to sell property to us. The annexation and zoning this for a park will, will make the situation safer, I think, for everybody, and it will just clarify when there are problems, and it's life, there'll probably be a problem out there someday. Somebody will trip and get hurt, somebody will get in the water and have a problem, and it'll be the city's primary first responders. Of course, the city's in the county, and county would certainly have jurisdiction also to come out, but the city would have the primary jurisdiction if we annex it. With respect to the hunting, it's my understanding that TWRA, and I think it's TWRA, is the state agency, has agreed that the hunting rights will be removed from this section that where the trails are going to, where the trails are going to be placed on this side of the road. That's my understanding from some prior meetings, that where a variety of state agencies have been in place, including TWRA.
Even for the horse trail?
I think, was there other questions that I've missed?
I believe you got it pretty well, hon. If they wanted to participate in any more meetings about the use and other restrictions along this right-of-way, would that be something that the Corps of Engineers would be holding, or what?
I'm, I'm not sure that there will be more meetings on that. I mean, the trail plans are now at about the, I think, 60 to 70% final stage. There are a couple of agreements that are about to be signed between the city and the Corps in terms of operating the trail. There is, I think then, we'll be proceeding, hopefully, before the end of the year to be asking for bids to start construction. I can't say exactly when that'll happen. Frankly, I don't think that the downturn of the economy had any significant impact on the scheduling. All governments move slowly, and I think the city moves at light speed compared to some other governments, other governmental agencies. I think it just takes a matter of time. Before this could go forward to reach the stage we are now, there had to be a, the proposal had to be approved by the Assistant Secretary of the Army in the Pentagon, and getting things through those processes just takes time. And so, I think we're, a lot of us have been waiting on this, including some of the Corps staff in Nashville that's working on it, but I believe we're now at the point where we, where we're going to be very close to ready to starting construction. I would also mention, now, of course, those of you who live adjacent to the trail don't have this issue, but that trail is, the horse trail, is used by a number of people who don't live that close to it. Right now, the trailhead facility for the horse trailers that's on the Walter Hill Park property, I think the kind word would be inadequate. A, a part of this plan will be the construction of a new trailhead on a portion of the Coleman Farm. It's not exactly determined where it'll be yet, but there'll be a trailhead there that's designed for parking trucks with horse trailers on them. So, for your friends who come from ways away to ride the trail, it, and it should be a substantially improved access to the trail. So, that'll be part of this also, part of this construction project.
Thank you, Mr. Ives. Mr. Gill.
David, if I understand it correctly, regardless of whether we annex this or it stays county property, the Corps is intending on building the trail.
Correct.
The trail.
That's correct.
And so, our taking action on this doesn't change whether the trail's going to be built by the Corps, it's just whether who has jurisdiction to patrol and take care of it.
Clarifies the primary jurisdiction as being with the city. Now, I would say the city parking rec department will be responsible for maintaining the trail and for both trails. We'll have, so we will be, in future budgets, there will be, for the, for the parking rec department, there will be funds provided and available for, for maintenance of the, of both trails. One of the things that we think will help, we, we know that the, there's some gullies, I guess is the word, out there where there's some serious, pretty serious erosion problems and some maintenance problems when there are good rains. And I don't know exactly how it's being designed around those, but the intent is to have less ongoing environmental impact from those gullies. And so, that, whether the trail's going to move a little bit, or there'll be bridges over them, some of them probably will be bridges. But the intent is to reduce the amount of maintenance required in that way. Hopefully, that'll get, it'll actually prove to be true.
Secondly, along with that, the agreement regarding the hunting rights, that's a agreement that was reached between the Corps and, and the game wardens.
Yes, to TWRA, we, we've been involved in discussions, and I believe that the, the TWRA has agreed to remove the hunting rights from this part of the Corps property. It won't affect beyond that.
Any other questions for staff?
I would comment, I think, it's, it's nowhere near a master plan stage yet, but there is a desire on part of a number of people to extend this trail further to the north and onto Nashville and maybe beyond. Who knows? Congress, whether Congress will put any money out for that kind of thing again or not is, is a good question. I would say not in the near future. At some point, there's a good chance it will be done, but there's no way to tell for sure that that'll, there was discussion earlier about whether this would be a trail to nowhere, and we don't think so, because it comes from Walter Hill Park. And of course, we do know that the horseback riders, it's certainly not a trail to nowhere, your, your trail does go on, up to, what is it, Two Fork, or to, where does the horse trail?
The last.
Yeah, right. So, you go quite a ways on. In terms of the hikers and bikers, it's, it's a nice, it'll be a nice trail, an amenity to Walter Hill Park, that you go to Walter Hill Park, go out a ways and come back. You won't have, and I think it'll get a lot of use with that.
I hope that the trail will be wide enough to handle, get all the horse people that have been thrown about the bicycle people that may want to talk about.
And Mr. Ives, we need to move on.
I stand.
Any other questions or comments? Ready for our motion.
Chairman, I'll, I'll move for approval.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Richard and Jim, thank you very much for coming tonight, though, and pointing out these things. It's very important for us. Item H is the same property, 186.6 acres along the east fork of Stones River for a zoning application, west of Highway 231, Lebanon Pike, to be zoned park simultaneous with annexation, city of Murfreesboro is applicant. Ms. Green.
Thank you, sir. Our next public hearing is to consider a zoning change simultaneous with annexation of the parcel, parcels we just considered in the previous agenda item. It's the same land considered earlier, and the city of Murfreesboro is requesting that this property be zoned to P, which stands for park, simultaneous with the annexation. Zoning change request is consistent with the current and proposed plans of this property to be used as a greenway and park. The planning commission should conduct a public hearing prior to making your recommendation, City Council, regarding this zoning change request.
Okay. If there's no questions, I'll open the public hearing at this time, ask anybody to come forward that'd like to speak. Seeing nobody come, excuse me, my voice is giving out. Seeing nobody come forward, I'll close the public hearing.
Move for approval.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. And the final public hearing tonight is a street renaming for a portion of Community Circle in Kimbrough Woods subdivision along St. Andrews Drive, city of Murfreesboro is applicant. Ms. Green, Mr. Adelot, Mr. Ives.
I'd be glad to present that. The, the Kimbrough Woods subdivision is located along the west side of St. Andrews Drive. This is just north of the Veterans Parkway, it's south of Highway 99. The property was annexed and zoned to PRD in 2004, and soon afterwards, the subdivision class for the sex, first sections were approved. The zoning plan and the master plan for the subdivision included a street named Community Circle that extended in basically a, roughly a square-shaped spiral. The circle, the, the street basically begins and ends, not in close proximity to each other. The unfortunate situation is that as a circle, it made sense, but when the subdivision failed to move forward, and the subdivision has not progressed as was originally expected, we now have the beginning of the street, along with property numbers ascending in a southward direction, and then the last portion of the street with property numbers descending from backwards. So, what we have is a little bit of a snafu that has, has basically happened. Recently, the fire department has had a couple of responses out there that were complicated by, by this situation. And the fire department, along with our police department, have requested that we address this situation by renaming one of the sections of the street. In looking it over and studying it, and Mr. Blomley put together a study that was included with your materials, what we've discovered is that the proper portion to name, the one that has the fewest existing homes, and therefore, existing people who would be directly affected, the portion that is correctly numbered is the part that is the western segment, it's not colored. The part that has the most, or has the fewest, excuse me, I got that backwards, I'm getting tired. The part that has the fewest number of residences and is backwards is the area that's colored orange. We're suggesting that it be renamed. We have nominated the name Jerry Anderson Drive as a replacement for that name. Jerry Anderson was a professional football player with the Cincinnati Bengals. He drowned while rescuing two children from the floodwaters of Stones River. He was successful in rescuing them, but unfortunately, he, he drowned in the effort. So, he is a community hero, who I often get requests to name a street in honor of Mr. Anderson. What we need to do is, in accordance with our protocols, we need to conduct a public hearing on this. Certainly, we want to hear from the people who live on the street, if they would like to address the planning commission on the matter, and certainly, other street names can be considered. We've nominated this for the reasons I outlined. We believe it's an appropriate street name. It does qualify based upon the emergency services and E-911. There are no other streets naming this manner, so it does not duplicate any other streets. So, with that, Mr. Lam, we need to conduct a public hearing on this. After the public hearing, the planning commission will need to take action. After the planning commission takes action, if you do choose to rename it and, or into whatever name we propose, we would take it to the City Council for them to also take action and to authorize our street department to make the expenditures to change out the street names.
Okay. Any questions? I'll open the public hearing and ask anybody to come forward. Don't think anybody's left. Seeing no one come forward, I'll close the public hearing. What are the wishes of this commission?
Move for approval.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Mr. Adelot, I think you guys did a great job on that. Thank you for doing that. Staff, of course, in other business, Mr. Adelot.
I have none.
I have none.
I have none.
For what? Thank you.
Mr. Lewis, you got anything, Mr. Bromley?
We can conduct an hour of training.
In that case, we stand and join.